Call our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting, the Mayor and Borough Council, Borough of Seaside Park County, Ocean State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, October 16th, 2025, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session which has now ended. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice to the meeting for publication to the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of this meeting in the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Enigma.
He will not be here this evening.
Councilmember Condos.
Here.
Councilmember Connor.
Here.
Councilmember Craft.
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Here.
Council President Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Let us all now rise together for a moment of silence to be followed by our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is approval sought for the minutes of October 2nd, 2025, a work session, October 2nd, 2025, a regular meeting. Is there any comments from council or if not, a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President Wilk.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Craft, roll call.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is a motion for approval of the October 2nd, 2025 closed session, special minutes. Is there a motion?
We've got motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Condos.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Connors, roll call.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next item are ordinances that are all first readings for a hearing and discussion for a second reading. The first on the agenda is introduction and first reading ordinance 22524 amending the Borough Code of the Borough of Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 450 entitled Water and Sewers. Any comments from council, if not a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Craft.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rotunda, roll call.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is introduction, first reading, it's ordinance 22525 amending Chapter 405, Article 5 of the Code of the Borough of Seaside Park entitled Property Owners' Use of the Verge as a follow-up to past discussions and research through the Code Department Planning Board and the committee and conversations at past meetings as to a first reading. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President Wilk.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Connor, roll call.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is introduction, first reading ordinance 22526 amending Chapter 435 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. This is added space as per the ongoing work of the Police Department in reviewing those that qualify for special consideration, handicap parking and the like. Is there a motion for first reading?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President Wilk.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are authorizations. There is one, the event Seaside Park PTA Halloween Parade, Sunday, October 26th, 2025, 12:30 PM to 1 PM. Location, the police station, Long Streets 6 Avenue, Bayview Avenue, 3rd Avenue. The approval would be conditioned upon obtaining a county parade permit. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion with the one condition required?
I just make one other comment, I think we talked about it before, you can bring it up again at the end, but we also coordinated with the PTA to have the Seaside Park Rec. sponsored scarecrow contest again.
Right.
And doing on the same day, so that'll precede this event from 10 to 12, and then go right into the PTA event.
To the parade, yeah.
Very good. Anything else, or if not, is there a motion with the one condition?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Connor, roll call.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are payment of claims, 225338, approval of payment of the atomized claims as set forth on the check registry bill list for the period October 3rd, 2025 to October 16th, 2025. Any comments, question from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Craft.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Seconded by Council President Wilk, roll call.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are resolutions, all read in summary fashion, 225339 authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise request for proposals for professional positions for the year 2026. 340, authorizing change order number one to the contract with Remington Vernic Engineers to provide professional engineering services for the 14th Avenue Stormwater Pump Station Project. 341, appointing Jennifer Burr as the municipal tax collector effective November 1. 342, requesting permission for dedication by Ryder for Storm Recovery Trust Fund by NJSA 40A 4-62.1. 343, authorizing the amendment of Resolution 225330 for the adjustment of designated water sewer utility accounts. 344, authorizing membership in the volunteer power company. Any comments from council on any of the resolutions? If not, it's our practice to, if there are any public comments on any resolutions, if anyone has them, we permit it, although not required by law. Anyone have them, if they could give their name and address into the record. Hearing none, I would close the public portion on resolutions, I'd entertain a motion as a consent agenda from council.
Is there a motion?
Motion by Councilmember Condos.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Craft, roll call.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Yes.
Council President Wilk.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And that concludes the written agenda, everything that had come in. Does anyone else on council have anything further at this juncture?
Good morning. You're good?
Yes.
Public Works Committee, status report. As a part, the appeal is on the New Jersey Supreme Court docket, PLOD, so now we're waiting for the New Jersey DEP to write their environmental decision docket, documentations for the construction of Route Number 11 on that site. The 14th Avenue Pump Station, the anticipated bid date is January awarding in February and commence construction in the spring. Stormwater management equipment, we are anticipating putting out to bid for stormwater maintenance equipment, back truck, the two street sweeps and a generator for the 14th Avenue Pump Station in November and awarding in December. The cost estimate is $1,564,000 and the borough is eligible for up to $2 million principal forgiveness. Improvements to J Street, improvements will be made to J Street between Northwest Central Avenue and Marina. Existing storm drains, infrastructure curves, sidewalks, apes will be replaced and the roadway completely reconstructed. Term start date is meant to wait November, the course of this project is $348,313 and the borough was awarded $244,825 through the root drifts of DNT 2025, the miserable eight red to improve so that the balance of the borough is responsible for $103,488. We will be starting phase one on Central Park, it consists of the custom benches, papers on the quarter with a, we are waiting to get a schedule for the electrician, that's the electrical service we put in there. And also there, I have a very interesting little information on the water usage in the borough, since all the improvements were made to our water mains. The pump station for 3B, millions of gallons, okay. During 2024, 117 million gallons pumped. In 2025, year-to-date, there's only 84 million. This period last year was 96 million, so we're down 12 million gallons from last year at this time of the summer. Overall, for 2025, I would estimate between 15 to 17 million gallons less than last year because of the water main replacement. On the highest pumping year on the borough record was 223 million gallons in 2005. So you can see that the oil going in water mains, water service is going again, our precious resource, our water, the savings. There's not even the savings on the water, which is very important, the water, the pumps, the electric usage, and everything associated with that. As a result of the town's investment in our water system for basis 1, 2, 3, 3B, we have cut that total pumping amount down to probably 109 million gallons in 2025, that is a total savings of 114 million gallons of water. I think that's very important.
Yeah. I recognize.
But no less spent, I know it's hard to maybe have all those stuff up, but it's not only for the water, it's also for sewer laterals, where we're pumping less water into the Kennedy Shore treatment credits who are way there, is dramatically less, what is it, 20 years ago, a bill was $1 million, I believe, almost $1 million a year for, just for the sewage, it's down greatly from that, for that amount. So you can see that it was money well spent for water mains. I had to get this, we've been talking about it in the Public Works Committee, so we probably have these numbers. We had a lot of leakage, I'm not sharing it because the amount of sand, we're not going to find a leak, if there's a leak, it's just going to, it's just going to pour right out. It's amazing how much water we were losing, I'm not sharing it, we do really lose it, a lot of water, so that's where the leaks were. That's my report, Mayor.
That's nice.
Thank you, Marty.
That's nice.
That's a good news report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, anything else from council at this juncture?
I don't have this.
Hearing none, I'll go into the audience, any public comments, if anyone has them, if they could give their name and address into the record, as per the public meetings there? Yes, Edie?
Edie claims $48,000. I know you said Central Park, but I think you meant Park Central.
Park Central, yes.
The papers in the corners, what's that?
The corner section, we're starting on the quarter on 3rd. You have to refer to the drawing, it's almost, it's.
Is that where the benches are going to be on the papers?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just the quarter, that's one section we're starting with, and electric is 30 only on the quarter towards the house.
And what's the electric going to service, is that going to be lit, that area then?
Eventually. We're putting in the electric service with the, Karen, could you help me with this grant?
With the disease that we're having, sort of in the middle, that'll be lighted, and it'll be like plugged there, so people can charge their phones.
The city here, my grant is pending for this.
I'm sorry?
The grant, this is for grant money.
Yeah, the local recreation grant. We received $90,000. And also, the EAC has graciously offered to donate the remaining balance of their budget for 2025, which is roughly $2,000, to that project, which will likely go to tree, shrubs, planting, something environmentally sound. You in that?
One question on the mailbox issue. What brought this to light? This changing of the ordinance to allow mailboxes in the verge, what, where did this start? Since we don't have committee discussions and reports anymore, I'm just curious.
Well, that would be my committee, I don't know if it started anywhere.
Well, who came up with the idea that the ordinance need to be changed?
Change ordinances all the time, we work.
And I think part of it, too, if you don't mind, that was the president, residents are told one thing by the post office, because the postmaster general would prefer that post people, that mail people don't have to get in and out of their truck all the time, that's where they want them, so they were telling residents who were putting in new mailboxes to put them in that area, in the verge, and they were. So, and so, we were conflicting with the postmaster general's regulations.
Thank you, Karen, you're correct, that's what, that's what we did.
That's what I was wanting to know, what the origin of it is. Well, at the last meeting, when this was first discussed, I raised the issue that in the summertime, when the blocks are all parked up, the mailman's still going to have to get out of his truck. Well, I'm not, I'm just making an observation, I don't know if the postmaster general knows that or not, but.
That's a few days out of 365.
The whole summer?
I don't think the whole summer's length, but it's just.
Okay, all right, I'll give you that.
Nothing's perfect.
Okay, you're right. New topic. The whole Tri-Borough issue. My question is, is why do we have to find out the information from a Shorebeat article? Why can't information like that come from the council? The article in Shorebeat talked about.
I don't read.
I don't read that.
Well, it's a good thing I do, because that's how I find out what's going on. The article in the Shorebeat talked about the fact that the Heights was investigating what to do, and was it private, was it this, blah, 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 blah. That's the first that we had heard anything about it, and apparently this had been being worked on for a while. And there's obviously great concern on the part of the residents of the situation with Tri-Borough. And my question is, is why from you people, didn't we have some indication that this was ongoing? Why do I have to read about it through Shorebeat article on Facebook? That's my question.
Why has it been mentioned at meetings?
No.
We talked about putting out. It's shared services, I mean.
We put out, then, we did.
I know.
Talked about that, I mean, we've been talking about that they're in financial distress, I think that's been publicly discussed, and obviously our concern is as great as yours of what happens, and you don't want to lose the services. I don't know about, like, if we had a meeting that we had to put out the request for.
So, Seaside Heights has the lead agency about the RFP.
Yeah, that was public, that was being done.
Well, my, here's my question. Why couldn't somebody have mentioned that this conversation was going on? Why, you know, we come and you have the resolutions and you have, but there's never anything else, and this, this harkens back to what I was harping on probably a couple of years ago, as far as there are, Marty I know is doing his committee report, there used to be at the work session, the different committees would talk about, the committee heads would talk about what's going on in the committee, and, okay, if nothing was going on, there'd be no report, I get that. But that's what we are missing, all the back discussions, and I'm not saying we need every chapter and verse, but some idea, all we get is, is this list, that's it, until I read about it in Shorebeat, that there's this discussion going on between Seaside Heights, Seaside Park, I guess Berkeley, I don't know, about the situation with Tri-Borough, about what the possible solutions might be. And I don't understand why that has to be, why can't you share information like that? Doesn't mean that that's going to be what's going to happen, I get that. But just the fact it would be nice to know that something like this is being discussed. In the meantime, all we know is that Tri-Borough is sinking faster than a stone, and we might lose first aid services here on the island. In the meantime, you people know that there's a possible plan being discussed. What would be the harm in saying just that? That there's a discussion with Seaside Heights and Berkeley as to possible solutions? Why would that be a problem to tell the public?
I, I mean, I don't know if I'm the one to really address it, because I'm not on that individual, like, group that's been doing it, but some of it, we can't discuss because there's still some contractual things that are being discussed in shared services, so you don't necessarily want to have those public discussions, you can't. I mean, other than that, that's the only real reason. I mean, I think we've been very open about contributing as maximum amounts of money that we could give, Seaside Heights gave more money, we gave more money for continually helping to them to fundraise, we purchased supplies for them, I mean.
You're not telling me anything I don't, I don't know, obviously.
Well, that's the point, we aren't telling you anything you don't know, because there's nothing else to tell you than the stuff that's still in discussion, where there's no decisions.
They're contractual issues, all you would have had to say, pretty simply was, Charles and Magic, blah, 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 but we are currently in a conversation with Seaside Heights and Berkeley as to possible solutions, that, you know, is that too much to ask for?
No.
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
I guess I'm just saying, I thought that that was stated.
I think over the course of this, over the past few months, I mean, this has been the discussion, I'm not going to be able to cite a time, an hour, or a day, but I mean, I don't know what more, Edie, that we could tell you, other than what you've already told us, because we don't have anything more to tell. Shared services with Seaside Heights, they put a, they voted on that, and RFP went out. I don't know, you know, it's not like we were holding things back, I mean, I don't know what else we can say.
Quite frankly, between the time it was decided and RFP would go out, and it went out, there might not have been even a meeting to discuss it.
No.
You're telling me that before Daniel Lee wrote that article, that there was absolutely no discussion among you people in the governing body, that you and Seaside Heights and Berkeley were discussing, that's, that's all I'm asking for. It could be two sentences, but I did not know, we did not know, and I, you know me, I'm here almost every meeting, I had no idea that this topic was being discussed. Don't need to know the particulars, because obviously the particulars haven't even been decided as tonight, I assume, just the fact that it was being discussed. That's, that's all we're asking for, it's just, it's like Marty gives now, he gives his report, that's great, that's what, that's, we need more than, what are the committees talking about? That's, I'll go back to that. We used to have those committee discussions, and now we don't have them anymore at the work session. Just a little bit more.
I'll just, one comment about, I mean, for as long as I've been here, I would think a lot of those discussions that used to happen here publicly at the work sessions were because there was an extra meeting every month in order to do that. And given everybody's calendars and the fact that a lot of us still have day jobs and other things, like, we fit in a lot of these committee sessions where we can, so that we can either meet with when Karen and the staff up at the Borough Hall are available to meet with us, or somebody else, so honestly, we don't need to have a lot of the committee meetings here, because we're having them, and I think the actions that come out of them is what we share.
I'm not asking for committee meetings, I'm asking if you went around, and everybody that has a committee, that if you have had a meeting and you say, okay, DPW, you know, the public works, you know, blah, 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 just like, just like what Marty just did. But we don't hear from any of the other committees, so we don't really know what they're doing until it shows up here as an ordinance, which is almost a given, or a resolution, which is almost a given. That's all I'm asking for, a little more transparency, a little bit more, a little bit more information. We want to be informed, and I don't want to get my information from Daniel Lee, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Shirley?
Shirley, Crystal, 700 North Bayview Avenue. I'm kind of going to follow up on what Edie says. Like, at the last meeting, I was waiting for something to be said about the scarecrow contest, or whatever it is, I don't think, a contest, but nothing was said.
It was said.
It was said, Edie.
It was definitely announced.
Okay, Edie, it was said and it was done, and matter of fact, from the time you told me, you asked me about it, I know you asked me about it last year, this year, you come up here and ask me about it.
Right.
And I said, I'm going to take a look at it, I went right away to the red committee, we had a meeting, Karen, everybody else, and we set it up, and, and it's got, the signs out there, it's all gone.
Been advertised. That's not my adding.
Joe spoke about the whole thing.
Yeah.
Council meeting.
It was not mentioned at the last council meeting.
Yes, it was.
No, not at the last council meeting, Joe never took any detail about it.
I mean, just to let other people know, because, you know, we're trying to spread the word, I want to say is, every, somebody has, is in charge of a committee.
Yeah.
We used to also get overtime report for the police, how many calls, which had gotten to that point, but maybe we can go back.
Maybe that's, I do.
It's the overtime. We used to get reports on overtime, how much overtime was.
I think you wrote that out on your last report.
Yeah, I did, but I, I'll get it for next month, but I did it last month also.
And the other thing was, with the storm coming, and I know, Gina, you responded on, on Facebook.
I did.
Like, we were all, like, waiting for something simple, like, if you need sandbags, the police are handing them out, such and such a time, go to this section, because the boardwalks were being done, like, where to go get the sand if you needed, to warn people to move their cars up to Central Avenue, I mean, we lucked out, more or less. But a lot of people were waiting for that, and like, nothing came through. They had manolo king, there was a brick, Tom's River, they all sent things out to the people, but we heard nothing. So maybe next time, just to give, because I have tenants across the street that haven't been here for such a thing, so I was on the phone with them, this is what you need to do, this, you know, get your car up the street, just to maybe get back to that, I don't know who's in charge of it anymore, but it was a good thing that we used to have, and with this one, there was like, nothing. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Nelson?
I'd like to direct my question, Bill, regarding the amount of the payment of claims was, or is.
The what?
I'm going to play, you want some, in what area?
No.
You mean the totals?
Yes.
You have the billables? You have the billables? Do you have the billables, Nelson? Are you looking at the billables?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. Okay, the, it was Marina, it was. You just want to know what we spent?
The totals, the totals for.
I mean, that's, that's all the problems.
Right, that's what he's asking for, the total billables.
Looking at the billables, it's still pregnant.
That's what I'm, Shirley's saying.
Yeah, I'm looking at 2,293,000, $242.34.
One more time, 2 million. Okay. Thank you, Governor, Bill. I'd also like to thank the Water Department and anybody associated with water, and so we, you guys are doing a good job in town, I always think so. Any kind of savings that the council can provide for the taxpayers, it's always grateful, so keep up the job, keep it up. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Pat?
Pat, first, 137 10th Avenue. Number one, I, I haven't been at last meeting, so I missed about the verge, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on what it says, um, I have it somewhere, about shrubs and the triangle.
Site triangle, site triangle.
We, I, we have shrubs, I'm assuming the verge is between the sidewalk and the curb. Yep. So that's the verge, and we do have shrubs, some shrubs, a lot of, not a lot of people, but some people have shrubs, so it, I, I'm confused by what it says, do we have to rip out the shrubs?
No.
Because they're allowed.
The shrubs are allowed, you just came out of the site triangle.
I'm sorry.
It says they're allowed as long as they don't disturb the site triangle.
And what is the site triangle?
When, I think the police chief can explain that better than me, but you should be able to see if you're at a corner, if a car's approaching.
Okay, it's just corners, pretty sidewalk here, and you can, okay, all right, that was one. The second thing was, I hate to say this, Karen, but you did meet at the environmental committee last night, and we didn't have a vote on that.
Okay, well, Barbara Sibley emailed me, so.
Barbara Sibley?
Emailed me, and, and, yesterday, and asked if, so, nothing has been committed, I just said, if you want to do that, fine, we can accommodate funds.
Right, and there was some discussion of that last night, and in the November meeting, we're gonna, there were several other things brought up, but, um, we are definitely gonna discuss it in November, I just didn't want it to be confused, that we had already made that decision.
That was my impression from email, but if the committee hasn't decided that, that's fine, it's.
It definitely came up last night, and we talked about it, but there was no final decision.
I think when Barbara originally approached us about it, she said that there was money still in the budget, and did we have suggestions on things for the, the committee, and that was one of them, we actually talked about, um, the, what's the other bird thing, Pert Morton's, we talked about a bunch of ideas, and I think she was gonna bring them back, and, right.
Other people also had some suggestions.
Yeah, great, yeah, they did.
So I didn't want anybody to be confused. And I have a question about that, um, is there gonna be water?
Yes.
Yes.
There will be water.
Yep.
Good. I, I want to say, in relationship to what Shirley and Edie said, I don't come regularly to meetings, so I'm not speaking from vast experience, but I do know that I sat on very, very, um, active schoolwork for quite a few years, and the public expected to hear something about all the things that were being discussed in committee separate, a sentence here or there, and the, unfortunately, the reputation for the council, all of whom individually are all thought to be great, is that, why go to a meeting, you never hear anything, and when a question is asked, this is the public perception that I do, so I'm not generalizing to everybody in town either, because obviously I can't do that. You all are working hard, we recognize that, and we want the communication to be great. A sentence or two, our committee met, whatever, and of course, I know you all comply with sunshine law, so I don't know how your committees are set up even, obviously not more than two council people, but it's really, it, it helps in the town to just hear a little. When someone answers a question, and I hear this, I don't know why you would go to a council meeting, you ask a question and they just all look at you, that, that is not a good look, and I know you're all gonna get elections, I mean, there's, everybody's good and everybody, you are all like people, so I'm just adding to it.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Chuck?
Chuck, that will be two fifteen, Tenth Avenue. Um, regarding the water and sewer, great job, it's good to hear that, I'd like my rates like reduced by half, for the same amount that, including sewer, I'm gonna double check the sewer, make sure that's reduced to say, and I'll, I'll do that next month, for that quarter. Um, but, along the way, my mother, eighty-nine years old, got a letter saying, go out and check your water pipe, we don't know whether it's lead, copper, or whatever, and I'm like, she showed it to me, I'm like, wow, I'm like, how, how would I even do this? I'm gonna go rent a backhoe over at Home Depot, dig down, find out, most of the, I have homes where the water meter comes in the house, to where the water meter's there, and there's a pipe, and I could look at that pipe and say, yeah, that's what it is, because that's this, that's a bit of a standard in the U.S. that, that works at that way. Ours is in the street, and what I think you're asking for is the pipe from not the service to the meter at the, at the verge, but from the street, the water pit to the house. I think you want to know that.
Right, that's correct.
So, there's no way I could even do it, because mine comes up under the house and comes up, and then it transitions, I go to galvanized, so you, if I went and just checked lead, does that mean that they're gonna come in with some grant and like replace my pipe and everything, that's the best thing to do? Where, I don't know what to, we, we really can't check, what's the intent of that? How, how would a homeowner check the pipe metal? There's some photo, like six photos given of what they look like, but, so like, I couldn't figure it out, my mother's asking me, I'm like, I'm a good son, I wanna do it. But when they put the meters in, have they no records of what they, what fitting they use to connect the meter to the pipe that came from the house? That's the first thing that came to mind.
Yes, they do.
So wouldn't they, what are you?
They don't have it on every house, but you have a large percentage of it, every, every little work that's done now, there's like a bible of every little fitting, it's all known.
Yeah, yeah.
But some will go back too far, and they may not have that information.
So, so I, I did a lot of this.
We're going by the, the guidelines by, by the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, so they're not clear.
I mean, uh, it was, you need assistance, I had it with me up until a short while ago, I finally took it out.
Here's the thing, I, I did a lot of this work myself, in my own career, with lead pipes, big facilities, and often, um, it was because the water service came from the main pipe to the house, and they put a lead section in, it would only be like two feet to ten feet, because there was settling and stuff, and they wanted it to be flexible, so that's where the lead is, so even at the house, I wouldn't be able to do, but if, if we feel that the house is so old that we think it might be lead, is it okay just to check that box? I mean, it, it doesn't seem like there's a, it seems like the most cautious way of approaching the whole thing, so.
You would, you, well, I'm calling the water department, need assistance.
There's only certain houses got this, I imagine, not everybody's.
Everyone in the borough Seaside Park.
Everybody.
This was just the second round of letters.
Wow.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
I, I couldn't figure, I'm just like, I couldn't figure it out, so I'll go check the lead.
The state of New Jersey is viewing galvanized and lead as the same thing, so if, if you're galvanized or lead, the state of New Jersey will require you to replace the water pipes.
Oh, that's another part.
All right, off the.
Check copper.
Check the copper.
Says it in the letter.
Plastic. So, you know, it just doesn't seem like a homeowner can figure it out.
Just call the water department, we'll do it, right on there, just call for assistance.
Oh, okay, I did, okay. Um, the other thing I have.
You've asked the right question, Chuck, the state of New Jersey mandated this, did the state of New Jersey pay a dime to any of the homeowners or the town?
They did replace, I believe in Jersey City, every connection, they went and dug up, and they did it up there. In certain cities and towns, they, they actually paid to do it all, so I, I know that, but not Seaside Park. Um, the, uh, we had, I believe, one of the power poles went down, it broke or something like that?
No, that was not a power pole.
It wasn't a power pole?
It was not a power pole, you have to look at the marketing on the pole.
Okay.
It's a phone company pole.
A phone company pole.
It's, and it also has, um, the wifi on top, so that even, you know, you need to look at the pole, because any pole with the wifi would be a Verizon pole.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to say, I had a pole from my house, and it was all rotten in the bottom, and I called the, uh, JCPenney, they came out and they changed it, the pole is still there, the cable company hasn't switched over, so is that something I have to chase down, or is there like a list that the town manages for poles? And, and the other thing, which I think is very important, is what I found out about these, is that they regularly go out and they hire a company to check the poles, the integrity.
Correct.
They drive a boat through, this tester of the port, and they find out if it's rotten or not, then they put, I believe it was a yellow tag on it, that it's really bad, and then they do nothing. They do nothing. So, if, if, I would suggest maybe the town could get a list of all the ones that are yellow, like bad, it's.
You're on your five minutes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, sum it up, sum up is that, these, the people that change, that cross the traffic, the police officers in the summer, in the crescents, they, they sit in mud, and I think it would be a good idea if, if we could put pavers in right where they are, for those officers that sit there every day, something we could do this winter, and it would be, make the place a lot nicer, it's just a little paved ten by ten area, so they're not sitting there in mud in the summer.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Here, now, we're close, the public hearing, I entertain a motion from council.
I'll make that motion, Matt.
Motion by Council President Will.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Connor, for Oco.
Council President Will?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Maytham?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank everyone for coming out this evening, and have a, supposed to be a good weekend ahead.
Yes.